Sure. So Kylie and Carla, come on down and kick us off with the word of prayer.
Hey everybody, my name is Kylie Krohner and I have the true honor of working for Young Life here in Green County. And I have my friend Carla Dunn with me and she's a senior at Green County High School and she's going to open up your meeting in prayer.
...for our community and make sure that it's stronger and we have these wonderful people here to help make us, make our community stronger. And I just pray that everyone makes it home safely tonight and this is my prayer, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, this pledge.
Let's lead with this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in this. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Carla.
Some... That's second.
That's second in motion.
Motion is second in discussion. Hearing then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post sign. We turn it over to Ms. McMoore for our special recognition.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Before we get started, I just want to say welcome to everyone to our November board meeting. Any of you who are currently in the schools know that this is the last day before break tomorrow, so if we're thankful for anything, it's the foresight of the board for a week-long break at Thanksgiving, so thank you for that. Our teachers have been working very, very hard to get our kids to this point, teaching their arts out, really trying to create joyful, meaningful, enriching learning environments. Hopefully you had an opportunity to see our points of pride that have been rotating on the screen, both out in the hallway and in here. Those points of pride are also always available for you to share with whoever wants to know what's going on in the Green County schools. I'm thankful to Ms. McMoore for working hard on that and also... If you want to say that our Green County High School football team had an opportunity to play in the first round of playoffs. As we know, we did come up slightly shorter than we wanted to, but want to say thank you to the boys and to the coaches for a great season and for laying it out there for us. And also want to make a special shout-out to our transportation department and Ms. Weaver for working diligently, not only to make sure that the football team got there, but also our fans, our cheerleaders. And we also had about fifteen or sixteen families that we wanted to make... But we do want to officially recognize, now that we have received the award, that Green College and Career Academy has been named the Georgia College and Career Academy of the Year. So I want to say congratulations to y'all. This is a great event that the College and Career Academy hosted on Monday earlier this week to celebrate all of those who have helped make it an amazing place for kids across the county. So congratulations again to our Green County College and Career Academy, so thank you for that. And then secondly, we want to take a moment to recognize retired educators of Green County and recognize their dedication and commitment. Many of the retired educators of Green County have already committed their whole lives to Green County and they continue to do so. And so the board would like to make a proclamation to our retired educators and Mr. Gilgor is going to read the proclamation for us.
And we've got a whole lot of whereas. Green County Board of Education proclamation recognizing retired educators of Green County. Whereas Green County's retired educators have devoted their time, energy, and talents to the academic and personal development of countless students, helping to shape the future leaders, innovators, and citizens of our community. And whereas through their dedication and commitment, these educators have inspired generations of learners to pursue excellence, to demonstrate integrity, and contribute meaningfully to society and whereas the impact of Green County's retired educators extends far beyond the classroom as they have served as mentors, fallen... ...their careers and into retirement. And whereas the Green County school system continues to benefit from the wisdom, experience, and support of its retired educators, many of whom remain active in civic and educational activities that strengthen and uplift our schools. And whereas the Green County Board of Education recognizes that the success of our schools and the continued progress of our students are built upon the foundation laid by those who dedicated their lives to teaching, nurturing, and guiding young people. Now therefore, we, the Green County Board of Education, do hereby proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and deep appreciation to all retired educators of Green County for their exceptional service, lifelong dedication, and continued contributions to our schools and community. And be it further proclaimed that the Green County Board of Education publicly recognizes and honors these individuals whose lasting influence continues to inspire excellence, strengthen our educational community, and enrich the lives of students and citizens throughout Green County. Thank you very much. We'd love to have you go down and present the plaque.
Thank y'all so much for being here and for being a part of Green County's state of the game. As we move to our information and special agenda, we've already listed up our points of pride, just a reminder those are on our website. We encourage everyone to check those out. We're so excited that you are here and up and walking and we are appreciative of that and he's going to share...
He is one of our tech specialists and we're thankful for him and all that he does every day for us. Tonight, board members, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Secretary, other board members, I'm just going to give you a brief introduction. I've had... ...field... ...y'all... ...how government... ...E-Rate to transfer to local rural school systems. E-Rate was founded... It was the federal program... ...of money to schools. There are four divisions of E-Rate. We use the student libraries division. If you ask how E-Rate is funded, if you look at the bottom, if everybody look at the bottom of their phone bills, you'll see surcharges usually listed on your phone bill. One of the surcharges is a universal service fee. It's ninety-nine cents. So imagine every phone bill in the US having a ninety-nine cent charge. You'd love to get that coming to your house. But it's how they fund the four different divisions. Last year, they put about four and a half billion dollars in the E-Rate for schools and libraries alone. In 2014, they modernized E-Rate. They moved away from regular telephone charges and moved toward connectivity and broadband. We've done that. The big thing that happened to us is in 2014, they equalized and we... I can show you in the past, we've been able to get four and five million dollars every year rather than five hundred thousand every five years. The changes this year impacted us two things. They took bus wifi out of the funded eligible services. They also took away student hotspots. So in the past carriers, we also had, we deployed during COVID... This year, that's one of the changes unfortunately that was made. Two types of connectivity that E-Rate funds. There's category one, which is really the connectivity to our buildings. And then there's category two, which is connectivity inside of the building. Every year we get category one money. I'll show you how it breaks down. So it allows us to provide the internet, provide some of the other services to the schools. Every five years, we get category two funding. And this year, we're in the process of getting ready for that to be replenished. A category one example is our lease lines between LOA in the board office and Union Point in the board office. I know it's difficult to see because you're looking at thirty-something miles of fiber, but we own and lease this fiber from a company. So from the board office to Union Point, you'll see a blue line and orange lines. The blue lines are aerial, so it goes down to Hammondsburg, hits old Union Point Highway, which is a dirt road. And then the orange part is underground. If you could zoom in, you'd see that when we cross the Nipco rail spur, it goes back aerial because we're not allowed to go underneath that rail spur of fiber. So Union Point is pretty much all underground. Going to LOA, we're all above ground, so it's an aerial one. And we work with a company to maintain that fiber when limbs fall, trucks hit poles, and we... We have a company... ...cutting that, our fiber, and cutting our fiber. Another example of category one purchase fiber is the network that connects all of our schools. So here in town, we have what we call a campus network. And so you'd see the yellow line goes down, goes to the high school, comes out of the high school, goes over to the middle school. And there used to be circuits going over to the old elementary school. We've abandoned that portion of the network. So that's an example of us purchasing fiber and it buried... Now we're in the year, starting to write our competitive bids. The E-Rate purchasing process has its own unique bidding system. It does comply with local bids. It does comply with state bidding, but we have to follow E-Rate one hundred percent. You don't get your funding. So right now, we're preparing our bid documents. We'll post them to the E-Rate website. Last year, we've got fourteen bids on one particular item that we posted from all over the country. We evaluate those bids. We grade those bids. We go through a process on those bids. And when we come back to you in April and May of next year with our recommendations, we will have vetted all of that and don't include the entire process. Ms. Wright and the nutrition crowd for the work they do because by keeping us in the community... ...that looks like. So we're thankful for Ms. Wright and the work that her crew does in keeping us in CEP. This year, our current E-Rate projects look like the following. The big deal is there's a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars worth of value. We get a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars worth of discount. So the district only pays twenty thousand dollars for a hundred... Does our heavy lifting on our network. My engineers are trained to go... Have a lot of money invested in their training. Southern Light handles the fiber to Union Point LOA. Com South is the LOA internet. That's now called Sparklight and Hard Gray. Char Communications, we know that as Spectrum. We switched over from AT&amp;T to Spectrum a couple of years ago in the bidding process, saving about a thousand dollars a month. And so they handle the bus shop. They also supply internet capacity. We have two forms of internet that we always keep available. Internet from the state of Georgia and then we have our secondary supplier, which is Char. We are LOAs backup, so if internet goes down, our network, our... Always active and... And if they have an issue, they fail over to us. And we've got enough capacity. I make sure we keep enough headroom so we can handle anything that LOA would throw at us. We've only had to do that, I think, once this year where they had an outage and they failed over and everything worked just fine. And then Bell South is how, is the only bidder that bid on the new elementary school when we connected it to our wide area network. So we communicate with GCES through Bell South. Coming up for the coming year is we're working now on the category one. We're looking at bandwidth needs. We'll improve bandwidth needs. All of those contracts comply with Georgia law because they've got a one-year out clause. At any time, we can execute and get out of the contract just by, maybe it won't happen here. One, we go from a hundred and sixty-seven dollars per student to two oh one fifty-seven. And this year, because nutrition has LOA in the... On the CEP... We're working out with LOA... Fair share. So we'll end up... Funding... Out... Of LOA. So what do we, what do we do with that money? Well, the big thing that runs our network are called network switches. And ours are now entering their seventh year of service. So at about seven years, you really want to change your technology out because that's when power supplies start to die and just things happen. So as good stewards... We're going to change out the switches. We've already replaced all the wifi in our buildings. We've used the state security money to replace all of the cameras in our buildings. So we're now, I consider us state-of-the-art on one side, state-of-the-art on our cameras. And we're fixing to get state-of-the-art on our switches. If we have leftover money, we will evaluate recabling portions of the high school and the middle school where we've got some pretty old wiring. The new cameras, the new wifi require better bandwidth over the cable itself. So by us upgrading of the cabling plant, we get better speed, better performance on our wifi and on our cameras. So we're going through all of this. If you look at our, anytime you can go down and look at the funding list that I can't click on right now. There's a website that has all the details of our funding since nineteen ninety-six. And you can see that over those years, it's been close to fifty million dollars worth of equipment purchased and processed here in Green County. Tonight's purpose is to make you aware of it, answer any questions you have. We'll be back in April and May with the actual bids and what we're actually planning on doing for your approval.
Hey Keith.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about the funding was discontinued for the hotspots and another... And I know how sparse internet connectivity has been with Spectrum coming in as hard as they've come in. Have you seen an increase in availability for our students and families?
So a couple of things, yes. And through student nutrition, we are encouraging our families that have now fiber in front of their house to use the subsidized E-Rate program for families that need internet. There's a plan that gives them at least twenty-five meg every month at a reduced rate. So we are encouraging them to sign up for it. We... The problem with the network in Green, wireless networks in Green County from AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile... ...fifty-five meg download speed per family. They didn't fund anybody doing their own wireless network. We figured it out. We knew where we were going to put our cell towers. We did all that work, but we were denied. Really, that would be the ideal thing for us to do because... They're not going to build out. Which limits our ability to use the one-to-one program for all the students to take the Chromebooks home and do what they want, do what they need to do for school because they simply don't have the internet at home. We can do so much with putting content on the Chromebook, but a lot of the video, a lot of the rich content, we need streaming internet in their homes.
So what you're really saying is if the internet doesn't get to that home, hotspots uses.
They... They have been useful in a few areas, Dr. Tucker, but by and large, we've got two D holes. Yes, sir.
If it doesn't get to there, there's a hotspot.
If your phone doesn't work at your house, the hotspot's not going to work at your house.
So I know during COVID, we identified the students that, that needed access to internet. Are we currently still tracking it? I know we're encouraging students to, to take advantage of this discount, but are we... Do we track the students who...
We have not done that survey this year. It's something that we plan to do and we get into early next year as we start our E-Rate cycle. We will go back and re-survey the students to find out.
Is that an annual survey?
It has not been annual. It has been kind of as needed based on what we were trying to do with E-Rate. We'll probably make it annual. The big thing that we've discovered is communicating what we mean by good internet at home. A lot of people think because they can stream TikTok on their cell phone that they have good internet. We are, reason we haven't done it yet is we're preparing kind of a test to give them when they go home to feed back to us what kind of internet they actually are getting on their wireless device. Did that answer that? Okay.
So Char owns Spectrum, right?
Yes, sir.
So do they have grant monies available?
Yes, sir.
To do what you were talking about that we couldn't get done with the ten million dollar project?
No, sir. They don't have money that we can control and access. The, so part of E-Rate is something called high cost. And the carriers get the high cost money where they put four billion in this brand initiative. And we've been the advocates really here in the county to make sure that Spectrum and the other... Looking at the Green County four carriers to do work. So when Spectrum ran the grant, where Spectrum got money to subsidize them pulling fiber down some country roads. There are, the different carriers are doing that across the county. We don't have a good mechanism. We're going to the Hill to talk again about how do the rural school districts get the feedback from the carriers about where they plan to go. We see the stuff in the map, the Georgia Rural-Broadband map, has the detail of every home in the county and whether or not they have what they consider to be high-speed internet. So we track that. We're trying, we're going to work with the county's GIS department to take our students, our addresses, and match it up with the county to try to create a map that shows which of our homes now have high-speed internet based on the updates to the Georgia Rural-Broadband.
Well, my last question is the county I know has been having the same concerns we have.
Yes.
So is that something that the trade can help us out with or if we partnered with the county commissioners, would our voice be louder?
The strategic plans of the county commissioners really is about what we have planned to do here. I've talked with the county commissioners about that section of the strategic plan probably needs to be updated because their plan is pretty much layered on top of what we've planned to do. So it's an area that needs to be kind of revisited.
So bottom line, send this in, when money comes back, the resources department is saying how long the mental will take, the time. If that happens, do we actually have... Teachers and students in school?
So we're, so we're working on the funding calendar. They will grant the money in, starting in July of next year. So we're that far in front of it. They'll start doing in what they call waves, Dr. Tucker. And so last year, we were wave seven. So we got our funding the third week of July and we had the equipment in hand and in the schools before school started. So the switches will be a little bit more difficult. A lot of this depends on availability. When I came to Green County, we had applied and were trying to get our new wifi and the vendor they had chosen never shipped the wifi. And I had to do a vendor change because of availability and we switched vendors completely and started over. That took two years. But the switches hopefully will be available and we will get them, probably not while the school year, before school year starts. But we, like right now, I've got Kamen and Coos working on some of the security cameras and they work after hours. They work up until about midnight every night and we don't interfere with the school. Dr. Wright, Ms. Wright just gave us some good feedback. We were in her building putting in cameras and we didn't disturb anything while we were doing the work. So we know to work after hours and not mess up instruction. It's all about instruction.
Very good. Anyone else?
Thanks, Keith.
Yes, sir.
For sure. Thank you very much.
Welcome back.
Glad to be back.
Thank you for that update.
Yes, sir.
And we will continue to bring more information about E-Rate funding. Continuing with the theme of money, Ms. Connie Rilox, our chief financial officer, is going to provide a summary of our financial reports.
We'll fix that.
Let me see that. I won't give it this...
New Mrs. ... Members, I'll be presenting our general fund report for the month ending October thirty-first. We have collected fifteen point seven, seventy-eight of our budgeted revenues, which is greater than the prior year, thirteen point thirty-eight. We're coming in above the anticipated budget amounts across all line items with the exception of other local revenues. This is due to the decrease in cash balances and the interest rates for the year. We have spent thirty... It's just... Twenty uses. As I noted in the previous month, we're over in school administration due to the additional assistant principal we added at the primary school. And other uses will be over because of the coverage of the charter schools' October payroll, which is not budgeted. We are reimbursed at one hundred percent of that payroll several days with, into the following month. So we are currently where we expect to be for both revenues and expenditures for the year. I don't know how to single up to show you that, kind of where we're kind of ending the month then with our fund balances. So we're kind of where we're at.
Any questions? Thank you. I would, as I mentioned way back to your seat, just want to lift up, very appreciative of her background and the products and the United States auditors. Many may have under, may have heard about some challenges other districts have had with making sure that they're... Being solvent and confident that... Has done great planning and continues to do the work that we are exactly, we need to be and the board has budgeted for. So appreciate our hard work and our diligence in making sure that we are in a place of double injury, so thank you. Our next information item is for the board to consider twenty twenty-six board meeting dates. These are to be prevented for review and will ask you to take a final vote in December. We just want to lift those up and see if there's any considerations or concerns that you see immediately. But why didn't you have opportunity to take it away and make sure that it... Continues the same model of ending for the first days of the month that we've had except the way they were announced.
Are we going to talk about the calendar?
The academic calendar. Yes, we are.
Anyone? Anything on board days?
All right, we will be moved back to December for our final vote and approval as we move forward. There are no public comments. And the recommendation is... As printed.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post sign.
All right, moving to the action agenda. As Dr. Tucker alluded to, we are presenting the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar for your review and consideration. We'll lift up that... Packs and then also available online. We have... Green... LOA's academic calendar for consideration. We have... That we were considering... That were important to us around professional learning days, around student learning days, around staff work days. And one of the unique things that I will lift up is that we will both start school at LOA and in the traditional schools on August the fourth. We have built in as well two professional learning days where LOA and Green County will share resources and new common professional development to ensure that we are making the best use of our resources and also sharing the best instructional practices. So very excited about Dr. Bull and I getting together to be able to make that happen as we move forward. And the recommendation is to take any comment tonight and a little bit different than what has been done previously. We're going to put this out for public comment for a month so that the public has an opportunity to deal with any comments on it and to make any suggestions there. The balance... Having different breaks, the week-long breaks are in there. You'll see parent conference days and whatnot. The one thing that is a difference that I will lift up is the last day of school. For the traditional schools, it's slightly different than LOA's. And that's based on some scheduling around... Um, and that's based on, uh, some scheduling around, uh, the way that they wanna do early release and maybe some exam schedules that was not impacting us. So there's a slight difference in the last day of school, um, but, uh, the rest of the days are largely the same as we walk forward.
Any comment? I, I'm more, um, I've been in a lot of school districts and even we try to put together, um, we always sit a year ahead of calendars. So we have calendars coming up and we had the next calendar, so we did, we can look at it and for a lot of parents, different things, it made a lot of sense to me. Personally, I'd like to see us, if we look at that practice. I think with everything that we're doing now with students going to both campuses and variety of different things, uh, I think we can probably get that done. It's not a lot of difficulty and it also makes it better for some people to have two nights in the morning in front of us in terms of travel and different things. So, uh, I would, I would ask that we take a look at that before we came back to, to next move.
Absolutely. We can work on a twenty-seven, twenty-eight calendar and bring that to the table as well.
Forum in the paper last week?
Um, it should be, it should, it should be this week. And the papers are coming out soon tomorrow.
Did you already see this week?
Yeah, I don't think so.
They need a pilot.
That was a great article, by the way, and, uh, to show, um, what, what collaboration is turning and great job and I hope it runs soon.
All right, uh, we do need to vote to place the calendar out for public comment review.
Uh, we entertain a motion to close it out for review.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, send a sign.
For our next two items, I would recommend taking them as a package. They are also, um, they are policies and are continued policy review. Um, we are, uh, trying to be diligent in taking action on policies that, um, are both, uh, meaning updating because of relevant state law and, uh, federal law and also, um, policy. We have two, uh, policies to consider. Um, G A R K is an update to our employee vacation policy, um, and we would like to place that on the table, uh, for comment and review. One thing I will lift up, um, is that it is a, uh, clarifying, uh, policy around, uh, what has been a, a traditional payout of vacationing that has accrued over many, many years. So it's an attempt to be a little bit more fiscally responsible, um, in how we are able to manage, uh, vacation days. So it does, um, articulate when, uh, when the vacation days must be used by for those staff that earn them. Uh, we will be working and continue to work on, um, how to grandfather folks into this, so that you can see the effective date that's there. We don't want any employee who has been living under a previous understanding to be penalized. So we're gonna, um, make, uh, amendments to that. I wanna put that on the table. Um, the second policy, uh, is an update to student hearing procedures. Um, and this is just a matter, uh, in, in our policy, it indicates the use of a tribunal that includes a number of different, uh, staff members who come together for those hearings. The board has been practicing the use of, uh, a contracted hearing officer for several years now. We just wanna update the policy to reflect the practice that's been in place. So those are the two items that we've been bringing, uh, for the board to put out for public comment and review.
Are you any concerns or do you want to close at the same time? Not, I entertain a motion to approve both of these items.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Hold on.
Aye.
Sorry.
Are we putting these out so we'll get them at a later date, or we're putting these out to vote on them right now?
Uh, we'll be putting them out right now, uh, to vote on them next month.
Just wanted to make sure we're fair and fair.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or concerns? Okay, I guess we have a motion in a second. All those, anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you all opposed at the same time. Very good.
All right, action item number four, uh, we have had a policy G A A out for public comment and review. We have not received any public comment and review. Um, the recommendation is to approve the closed, proposed revision, so policy G A A A equal opportunity employment. And also policy J A A A equal occasional opportunities. Uh, just as a reminder, uh, this was an update to identify who is, uh, the responsible party in the board to respond to the, uh, townwide considerations.
And our practice did.
Uh, then Dr. Rhodes and, uh, Ed Heard is the neo-responsible.
Okay. Uh, do we entertain a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Policy in a second? Second. Any discussion? Here and then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, send a sign.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, uh, we put an RFP out, uh, to approve a landscaping contractor. Um, and the recommendation after the RFP process, and you can see the details of that, um, uh, on the website in the packets. The recommendation is to approve Easyland's yard care to perform district landscaping services for the Green County school. Um, and as you may be aware, they have served in this capacity for a number of years. Uh, the last time that this contract was reviewed was twenty eighteen. Um, so we made the opportunity for all sorts of folks to be able to respond to the RFP and they became, um, the, the clear favorite, uh, through, through the process of reviewing the RFPs.
Do we have a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm not sure. Is exactly to this, but where the new, um, the old elementary school was behind, uh, on this side of, uh, the Boys and Girls Club and next to the subdivision, is that their property or our property?
Who's there?
Boys and Girls Club.
A little bit of both. The line is there for a little bit of both of it, so we'd have to be a little clearer on where.
All I know is when you're coming from hilltop, before you get to the Boys and Girls Club, if you look back up on the hill, everything else gets mowed, but that doesn't seem to get mowed. I didn't know if it was theirs or ours.
I would suggest we check into whether it is and whose it is and, and it might not be something they had to know as often. Would you do more of a, more of a
Push out the technology.
Well, look into it. And if it is, then truly some sort of increase in this.
They've been doing, they've been doing this for, this a long time.
They are, they are, and they, they do high-quality work. They are very responsive. Uh, whenever we have any special request, they've been very responsive to it and it's also a benefit that they are local. Um, so that is, uh, a great way for us to do business as well, being a great person. So, uh, a local company that does great work and has been pricing. And they do LOA as well.
We're getting a package this.
All right, uh, any other more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, send a sign.
All right, I am very excited to present, um, our next, um, uh, contract for approval. Uh, as the board is aware, we have been working diligently to identify and to support the needs of, uh, some diverse students who have some challenges, uh, with self-regulation and other behaviors at, uh, in our elementary school in particular. Uh, we have put in place a number of training opportunities for our staff there so we can build their skill. Uh, but we feel like that training is long-term solution, not a short-term solution. We have some immediate needs. Uh, we, uh, did some due diligence and were able to, uh, find specialized education services in Bussessi, uh, who have, uh, a history of doing great work, um, across the state and across the country, uh, for this population of students. Um, there is a presentation, we're not gonna walk through the entirety of the presentation for you, but want you to know, uh, there's some information there about their backgrounds. Um, but they are, um, most successful, most recently in the, the space in which they were brought to our attention. Um, both Dr. Simmons and I had some connection to Henry County Schools. Uh, and they had a place called the School of Scholars in Henry County, uh, that was very successful in meeting the needs of these students across the district. Uh, so we were able to see, uh, both through Dr. Simmons' personal connection to it, um, being there while the, the school was in place and then being able to do some due diligence, uh, saw some great successes there and in other places across the state, Valdosta, Tiff, and some others. Um, and so what they're going to do, um, is they're gonna be bringing in seven staff members who will be working both with the school and also with up to thirty-two students, um, who have been identified and will be working Uh, this is not just of IEPs. In fact, there are students who do not have IEPs as well, so it crosses both those. We are able to provide services should their IEPs required, but also those services for those kids that may not have an IEP. Um, additionally, this classroom is not just for Green County Elementary School, um, but also is, uh, an additional space for us to be able to continue the collaboration between LOA and Green County. So we have space there for students who are identified with similar needs at LOA as well, um, and so it'll be a unified space. Um, the plan is for this to take two to three classrooms at Green County Elementary, which we have room for. Uh, so the students will continue to attend Green County Elementary School in this specialized program. Uh, so we've been very excited about the, the collaboration, um, and about the opportunity to be able to move forward. And so the recommendation is to approve the contract with specialized education services to provide support and instruction for up to thirty-two students at Green County Elementary School. The contract shall not exceed four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars and is inclusive of all training staff, program implementation. Uh, Sessi agrees to provide, uh, program director and associate director, two general education teachers, behavior support specialist, social worker, and also regional leadership support. So they are bringing to bear a significant amount of highly skilled and highly trained staff members to directly serve our kids and also to continue to support our school.
I assume there'll be some discussion here, so I can just go ahead and put a motion to approve this in a second and then we'll, we'll have some discussion.
Motion to approve.
In a second.
A second.
Okay, discussion. My first, my first question. One, how long is this contract? Or is this just for the last quarter of the year?
This is Yes, this is just This is just for the semester with, um, the hope that we would renew for next year as well, um, at the same price.
Okay, I'm assuming you're working with LOA on this. They are contributing financially also to this.
Uh, we're continuing to work on what that will be based on the students that they, they send over.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
The social worker, that would be in addition to the two
That's correct.
That's correct.
So will these, this will be full-time classes?
They're full-time classes. Um, and, uh, the way the program works is largely they, they will look and feel like Green County employees, um, in that they will be badge, will be background checks, they'll have access to technology in the same way that we would with our employees, but they are under the evaluation division of, of Sessi, um, including for staff activity. So, uh, this, uh, that's working model, um, of collaboration. We had a few of just somewhere. Uh, there's a continued relationship that occurs between administrative team at the elementary school and, and the, the team that is supporting these students. And the intent of, of the program is that kids will be in the program both to, uh, learn the best ways to regulate, self-regulate their behavior and also continue their academic learning, uh, and, uh, have the opportunity to transition back to the traditional classroom when they're ready for it. And that's in conjunction with the elementary school staff, the, the Sessi staff, and also with parents. Uh, so one of the things that makes this a really exciting opportunity for us is not just the skill that they bring, but their, their focus as an organization on ensuring that this is a whole family experience, not just a space to be able to, to fix a kid, so to speak. They understand that student behavior and student learning takes the entire community and so we are philosophically aligned with them as well.
Will these students be separated based on their grade level? So we're making sure that they're staying on track as far as, uh,
Yes, ma'am. The, the model that we are proposing right now will have two classrooms, a K-two bandage classroom and a three-five bandage classroom. Students will learn, um, at, at their grade level, so if they're a third grader, they'll be doing third grade content, fifth grader, they'll be doing fifth grade content. Um, and so, uh, they will continue to use the same curriculum that we utilize. Um, they will be, uh, doing the same assessments and the same assessment program that we do. Um, so that's part of the partnership is Sessi brings their, uh, capacity and skill and says, how can we integrate most seamlessly with what you're doing in your own school? Um, and continue to make sure that kids are learning at high levels while we're also helping them learn self-activity.
I don't know how many students would be coming from LOA, but how's transformation that would be?
Yeah, so, um, we are able to provide a shuttle from LOA to Green County if the family decides or they also decide that they wanna be car riders. Um, we, we can do that. That will be dependent on families and their desire to come. Um, currently, the discussion is then two or three students who would be good candidates from LOA. Uh, and so it's just a matter of, uh, once we formalize a partnership here, uh, making sure that we have the same kind of, uh, intake procedure to identify those students, um, and make sure that they get the
I strongly support this, so don't take this no more.
Yeah, okay.
So I strongly support this program, thinking that we have good kids who are willing to fund, what used to be funded to make this successful. But I think for the public, when we say how this basically just short of half a million dollars, well, in fact, it's bottom line.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, some of the funding, we will be using IDA funds to be able to cover portions of it. Some of it will also be coming out of some of the, uh, savings that we've made with different purchasing and hiring decisions, um, in current budget. This will be a discussion item for next year's budget, for us to make sure that we're moving to set aside for it. Um, but I would lift up that if you hire, uh, seven staff members, that not direct cost with our, with our staffing, being able to, to have staff that have skills that we are not able to go and find ourselves. Um, if we could, we would already have these groups in place. Um, but it also creates significant savings for our teachers who are currently working to try to help these students and, and not able to meet their needs effectively. And also our administrative staff who are spending an inordinate amount of time working with these students as well. So the savings are not just in the one-to-one looking at the staff cost, but also looking at the greater impact that we have on the entire school program. So we're serving the needs of these kids and we're also making it so we can be more effective and efficient with our other staff.
Anyone else? Any questions?
Just a quick question, um, in this program, if I'm not super clear, if I'm clear. These are say probability a one-year program for each individual student, where they actually come back every year versus a continual free, where you're free for these students. And fully through movement of mind?
Or how does that actually work?
So the intent is, uh, to move kids out of the program as they are successful. Um, and it's not meant to be a, a placement where you go forever. Um, it is meant to be able to give kids the skills to be successful as they move on. Some kids that takes three months, some kids that takes twelve months. Um, and it would be our hope that, that we would continue this partnership to be able to do that. Should it be successful, I can, can see us considering a middle school version of this as well. Uh, not necessarily for the same kids who are currently in it, but for any students that we might have recently identified. But that's a discussion we have later about why we wanted to continue the format. But the intent is to be able to equip students to be successful and to regulate and manage their own behavior so they can come back to the traditional classroom.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any other? All of them. Very big question. Okay.
The approval of a third-party facilitator for the Green County Portrait of a Graduate. The recommendation is for the board to approve the Georgia Institute for School Improvement as the third-party vendor to facilitate the development of Green County's Portrait of a Graduate and the refinement of the strategic plan to align with the portrait for a cost of no more than forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, as you, uh, look at this, I do wanna lift up, um, for full transparency, uh, Blissie was my former employer before being here, um, at County and I have been, uh, to that end, I've been, uh, requested for quotes. And, uh, three different organizations who, uh, brought forth their proposals. Uh, the full cabinet met to consider those proposals before the recommendation and the recommendation Blissie is from the full cabinet, not from me. Um, and so I am appreciative of that, but I do wanna be clear, um, that, uh, not only did I used to work for Blissie, there are two contracts that I currently have that are separate from working with Green, um, that are continuing in my, uh, in my work that we, uh, discussed as continued work and I negotiated the salary in a, a contract with the board. I wanna be fully transparent about that relationship.
Uh, would entertain a motion to approve this. I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm voting second. Any discussion? Anyone? Your opinion? All of the favoritists, by the same eye?
Aye.
All of those that close to the same side? Pass me, I guess I would get all the head myself.
Yes, sir.
Would you just briefly? Some summary of what this, what this.
Absolutely.
So is that in terms of the order of.
So what this work is intended to do is to give us an opportunity to define what we believe are the skills, dispositions, and expectations for students when they graduate from Green County schools. It is not from Green County High School, it is from LOA and Green County Elementary School, so it is a combined Portrait of a Graduate. So we'll be doing this work in conjunction with, with both schools, but not only with the schools, with the entire community. Part of this contract and a part of this work is to have a significant number of public forums and public opportunities for every stakeholder in the community to help us to determine what are the things that we want to be able to define as the skills and dispositions of students as they move forward. The College and Career Academy has already done some of this work that we will build upon. They have identified some of those workforce development skills and the soft skills that kids need, those will be integrated into this. And the. So that we're preparing kids for the world in ways that are more than you attended school and you did seventy percent of your work in your own credits. But really about how. We have to build school differently so we can give kids the opportunity to do that. As, as a side note, I had my student advisory. They, they lifted up. I'm not sure I could tell you, we're not really talking about those things. We're not really thinking about being critical thinkers. And so this is not just about lifting up what those definitions are, but also giving kids and teachers the language to talk about it so that we can make sure that we're doing it in our. Community to define this work. The plan is to hopefully bring the portrait for approval from the board in late spring.
This person will work alongside the school counselor.
We, every single decision that we make will have to be aligned with the Portrait of the Graduate. So when we build our budgets, when we, ideally, we would develop ways that we would assess kids against these portraits so that they would have a, a defense when they graduate from high school that says, I've met these four or five different dispositions and here's the evidence that I have of that. So career coaches will play a role, counselors will play a role, part of their graduation plans will include this.
Restructure of our strategic plan.
Yes.
All the way, all the way, this, this, every second.
Yeah, it will, it will give us some, some guidelines on how we think about what buildings need to be built, what programs need to be funded, what staff needs to be hired, what assessments need to be in place, what work do we ask kids, what curriculum do we select, what filters do we take? All of those will be measured up against the Portrait of the Graduate.
And you said late spring is the anticipated?
That's correct.
So would that actually put us into a position to try to implement some of the ideas?
Refine our strategic plan, refine our strategic plan that was adopted two years ago. So we'd be doing that work as. Is once we refine our strategic plan as a district. Identifying how we might improve standardized test scores. And the goal is increasing the milestone score by three to five percent. This would shift the expectation so that the milestone score becomes a symptom of us doing the work towards the Portrait of the Graduate, not the goal itself.
On the community meetings, John and Mariana have a, I know we went to Atlanta with seven years for the. Part in this, and, and do we have a pretty good relationship with them? I mean, are they actively involved in?
Yes, sir, we have a good number of work-based learning partners. Those businesses that we partnered with back then are some of the same ones we send our students to now. So we still have a good number, we've actually expanded that number.
Yes, sir.
Soon.
Okay.
Anything else? Nothing to change anybody's mind, I guess. Okay.
All right. Our, our final, I believe, no, not yet final, sorry, almost final action agenda.
Yeah, they're.
Our, our next collapse, action agenda item is, as a part of our work of evaluating the spaces and places that we are, are acting as a district, we have identified the need to modernize and update our finance and human resources platform. Both to allow for there to be more cross-training, but also more functionality for us to be able to track and to predict different things that impact us around hiring, around payroll, around benefits. And so the YAS platform integrates with tools that we have already in place, PC Genesis. And so it has a learning curve than if we were to go completely to a new vendor that was wildly different. Also, YAS is Georgia-based and built around the needs that we need for Georgia. So part of our, our HR and financing work is to do state reporting and to make sure that we are sending things to the state appropriately. YAS is Georgia-based and Georgia roots, allow them to not only make sure that we are able to do state reporting appropriately, but also we are part of a network where any district that is a YAS partner makes an update or a poll or form or something inside that platform, we get access to that as well. Not only expanding and modernizing our tools, we are also giving ourselves an opportunity as a small district to have access to other districts that are doing similar work as a way of kind of accelerating some of the things that we might want to do. So imagine, for example. Park County, nations appropriately, instead of us having to create our own, we can utilize theirs, just customize it to ourselves and have it already in the system. So it's also a way of maximizing small staff, giving them the opportunity to be able to really move efficiently and effectively. And so we would like to recommend that the board approve the purchase of the YAS platform for an amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
I entertain a motion to approve this recommendation.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just, just a quick question. This is a, I think I'm already clear, just to make sure I am. This is an implementation of a new product, not a continuation of an old product.
That's correct. But it does integrate with the old product so that we can make sure that there is redundancy and that we're, we're retaining the appropriate records and we deal with people's money and we want to make sure that we do it right, so it allows us to make that transition smoothly.
Okay.
So we're approving the purchase now and it says there's a yearly subscription cost that will be offset by what we're currently spending, so is the annual expense one fourteen?
This is the startup expense is the one fourteen, I believe the.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. And we will not be paying for the old system once we've made the transition, so that's how we will offset in the future years.
Right.
Anyone else? Y'all was a favorite.
Hold on. How much will we pay for the old system?
Uh. Twenty thousand for another system. And we discovered that our applicant tracking system needs a significant upgrade and significantly. Into twenty-five thousand range. So those costs will fade away as we transition to YAS. We can't count it all in year one because it will be probably an eighteen-month transition for some of those systems, Ms. Danner. So we can't claim it all upfront, but we will over time shed probably about fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars worth of existing cost and pick up sixty thousand for the new system.
It's, it's almost one-to-one with a little bit of savings after the initial startup fee.
Okay. Any other questions? All of the favoritists, by the same eye?
Aye.
All of those close to the same side?
All right, our final agenda item for the evening, and this is the official approval of the overnight trip trip to Sapulow Island, equipped by students of random four eighth graders. This is an exciting trip as it is the beginnings of some of the work of our competency-based education and even what our Portrait of the Graduate might look like in action. As you'll recall, this is an opportunity for. Development looks like on the coast, in the Golden Isles, to see different ways that Sapulow Island, Jekyll Island, and St. James have dealt with, or some such body about what they think should happen in Green after they've seen the effects of their. So it's a real-life experience for our kids and they'll be doing some real-life work when they come back with it. And really thankful to Ms. Wright and her team for taking hold of this and running with it, even though when I first talked about it, they looked at me like I was crazy. But just to say thank you. So it really is a collaboration across multiple divisions and departments, and we're excited to be able to offer it to our kids.
Hey, I was, is a motion, I, I didn't say a motion to approve this? Some, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All, every eighth grader has the opportunity.
Yes, every eighth grader. No restrictions.
When y'all make the presentation, I want to be there, I want to hear their plan. I'm, I'm serious.
Yeah.
Yes.
We might have them practice in front of y'all.
That'd be great. Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? I don't hear many, all of the favorites, two by the same eye?
Aye.
All of those close to the same side? Pass me, I guess. Are we now? Uh, I'm saying I should move to executive session.
I'd like a motion to move into executive session.
Do I have a second? All of them, any discussion? I was a favorite, two by the same eye?
Aye.
All of those close to the same side? Thank you. Any, any, yes, please. Okay, well, of course, I mentioned.
Yeah.